Press, the Galway Township Municipal Building, and the district website on January 12th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Chester?
Here.
Dr. Prementer?
Here.
Ms. Luria? Mrs. Avery?
Here.
Mr. Dase?
Here.
Mr. Gentile?
Here.
Mrs. Hermanal?
Here.
Dr. Bashara Blough?
Here.
And Mrs. Carmen?
Here. Can we all rise for a flag salute led by Mrs. Avery, please? Thank you. We do have on the agenda this evening approval from the November 17th, 2025 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Thank you. Moving on to reading of communications, please.
So I just wanted to bring to the board's attention and to the public, there are a few communications this month. First, we have a note of appreciation that I've attached for your review from Ms. Courtney Smith. We will also be recognizing her this evening. In addition, we have a letter of gratitude from Ms. B Jenkins, who we had recognized at the last board meeting and then also recently was recognized in the JIF, the Joint Insurance Fund Dinner, for her actions here within a school district. Many may not know, but we recognize Ms. Jenkins because she actually jumped into what needed to be done here in a cafeteria. A student who was choking needed to have the Heimlich maneuver performed on them. And like I told everyone at the JIF dinner, she was chosen to be recognized out of all of Atlantic and Cape May Counties, a recognition that she certainly deserves because as I shared that evening, this goes beyond money and claims and things like that, but rather she saved one of our students' lives. So it's important that we recognize her, but she also sent a letter of gratitude back to the Board of Ed. And then also a letter of appreciation from the Shirley May Breast Cancer Fund. As many of you know, we do raise money through Jeans Day collections with our staff as a credit to their cooperation and hard work and making sure that they also contribute to some of those donations. And ultimately, they had also sent a letter of appreciation recognizing our continued support of the Shirley May Breast Cancer Awareness. So that concludes our communications.
Thank you. At this time, we can move on to presentations, please.
So at this time, we'll start with our student council rep, Mr. Anthony Marmo. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Marmo.
Hello.
Do you have anything for us this evening?
I do. Good evening, everybody. I am president of the GTMS Student Council, and I will be presenting the student council report for December. I would first like to mention what we have done since our last report. So I would like to mention our roaring success with the Thanksgiving food drive. We were able to provide Beacon Church with over 250 food items, ranging from cans of corn and other vegetables and to entire turkeys that were directly donated to the church. We have also installed a digital suggestion box that anybody could access. This will help us streamline our voting process as well as to make it easier to receive recommendations from non-council members. For future endeavors, starting tomorrow after school, a select few of our council members will be attending a cooking class hosted by the cabinet. We will be making Rice Krispie treats, and we will be selling them on Thursday. On Wednesday, we will be embarking on our annual field trip to the Constitution Center in Philadelphia. And during December, we are also hosting a winter clothing drive. And tonight, after this meeting, I will be meeting with the head of Sunnyside Meadows, and I will be finding a collection date for a paper and hygiene product drive. And finally, on the last week of December before break, we will be hosting a winter-themed spirit day for our students. And this will conclude my student council report.
That's a lot of stuff, Anthony. Thank you. Yeah, do you need anything from us from this meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, if you have any questions or comments, get Mrs. Chester's attention, and she'll get my attention, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with the rest of presentations, please.
All right, I'm going to transfer down to the floor for a few presentations. I may go a little out of order. I think I'm going to cover the CUSAC presentation first and then complete some of our recognitions. Testing, all right. So last year, we basically stood here and we talked about our New Jersey CUSAC review. It's something that occurs every three years or so within districts. And this is basically an outcome report. It's taken a few months to get the final analysis from the state. However, part of our responsibility is to make sure we present the findings in public, not just to the public, but to the board in regards to those results. So I'm going to keep this brief, but I'm just going to give a little bit of background for those that may not remember in terms of what we presented previously. But there are five areas. If you think of CUSAC, just so everybody's aware, just like in the business world, typically audits take place. This is something that would happen within a school district. And it's basically, in a school district, it's our audit. And these are the areas that they are going to audit: instruction and program, fiscal, operations, personnel, and governance. So they were here during the course of the year, a variety of different times, to complete all of those different reviews for the different areas. They physically do come on site. They will take a walk through the buildings. They take a look at classrooms, closets, you name it. They're going in and out of everything. In addition to that, just like any audit, they're also taking a look at personnel files, and they're sitting and going through personnel files because we have certain rules and requirements that we have to adhere to. Same goes for policy, operations, making sure the things that are mandated are actually in place. And you can see the different process here from start to finish. You know, they do start with a training, so the County Office of Education does provide background and basically kind of really just giving us the play-by-play on how the year would look in terms of the things we can start to prepare as a district. But in essence, every year for us is a CUSAC year. We try to make sure that we adhere to all of the different things that need to be in place, not just the year that we're going to have the formal review. Back in 2425, this was the committee that was put into effect. Some of these folks have retired or have moved on to other positions. However, I thought it was important to make sure that we highlighted those people that had been involved from start to finish with this process. So here are the results. First, you do a self-assessment. And as a district, you can see on the left-hand side in red, this was our self-assessment. And if you recall, last year, we talked about instruction and programming being 70%. Ultimately, it's 70% because the majority of the data for instruction and program comes from standardized test scores. So in essence, it's things we can control, but not really, right? Like program, curriculum, instruction, those are all things we can control. The results of standardized testing is going to be at the hands of, let's say, the students on any particular day that they end up testing during the year. So fiscal, we anticipated 100. Operations, and as you can see all the way down, we anticipated it being 100%. 100% is obviously a pretty high standard to set for ourselves, but if you look on the right-hand side, you can see how we performed as a district. We only lost, out of all of those points, out of those additional 400, we only lost two points, or two percentage points in personnel. And I'd also probably say that it was something that, again, was not able to be probably fixed, but it is now, right? So those are things that, through an audit process, I could tell you we're very proud of, the things we can control as a district. We are controlling, making sure that we are meeting the certain criteria and standards that the state has set forth in all those different areas. One thing I did want to break down, though, was IMP for Instruction and Programming. Because being that that's the lowest area, I wanted to be able to point out how it breaks down and how it's different. When I say things we can control versus things we can't control, in terms of how IMP is actually rated for that 70% that we got out of the 100, if you look on the left-hand side, 60% of that score comes from standardized test data in the state. So ultimately, it's broken down for us for achievement, for English Language Arts growth, then math achievement, math growth, science achievement, and then subgroup performance. The one thing I want to point out here is a simple fact that when you take a look at achievement, that's meeting the standards that the state has set for every grade level that tests for standardized testing. You can see our achievement data is low, okay? However, our growth data is high. And for us, that actually is a good thing. So while we might not be meeting the standard that the state has set, you can see the work that we're doing here in Galway Township. Our students are growing. So year in and year out, that is something that we're proud of, and I continue to say and stand behind the fact that for me, growth equals achievement. Subgroup performance is also something that we're proud of because this breaks down all the different subgroups. And you can see that the performance here of our subgroups is also high. So again, the reason why that score is down at that 70% mark is mainly because of the standardized test scores and the results for achievement. If you look at 100% here in blue, just like our other categories, when you take a look at everything here, that's curriculum-driven, that's I and R S, that's our multi-tiered systems of support. Again, those are the things that we can control. And I'm proud to report that the things we can control, you can see that we are hitting that mark at 100% according to the county and the state. So some of the things that we are going to focus on for next steps, some things that have already been put into place, mainly focusing on instruction and programming. I'm not going to read the list here, but we have gotten back to what I call this year, getting back to basics. You see right off up top, implementation of a phonics program. For years, it had kind of gone by the wayside in terms of all the different philosophies and pedagogy behind what is best for English Language Arts and reading instruction. We're getting back to basics, and we have a strong focus back in phonics. The same thing goes for those math fluency routines, right? So again, philosophy being getting back to basics. You see also things here at GTMS, for instance, creation of a new schedule, allowance for really focused learning on the English Language Arts, but also now a class for writing. Because what do we notice? Our students, especially when they get to be digital learners and digital natives, they're really great with their thumbs, right? When they want to send text messages and even sometimes write some essays that way. But we want them to get focused and put all the devices aside and basically hunker down and start focusing on writing. So again, we're getting back to basics, and that's what these next steps are. So that concludes my report. And if anyone has any questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer.
Is there any questions from the board? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Santilli.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we have a couple of recognitions tonight. And the first recognition would be Ms. Courtney Smith. Will you come on down and join me here, please? All right, so some people may or may not know this. I mean, I think, if you didn't know this, they just don't follow us on social media, right? So on national TV, right here, Ms. Courtney Smith. But talk to us a little bit about Wheel of Fortune, where your passion lies, how you get... I don't even, like, if I wanted to go on Wheel of Fortune, I don't even know how I'd get on Wheel of Fortune, right? So tell us a little bit about your journey to get there. And then if it's all right, I want to show a little tiny clip.
Absolutely.
Okay? I'm not going to show the full... Well, I'm not going to show the full ending because to us, you're not a loser, right? You won, and you came out ahead. So we're super proud of you. But I want to show that clip for a reason. But I want you to tell us about your journey.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. I saw all the support on Facebook, so I wanted to first say thank you so much. That was very touching, and it was a big surprise. I didn't expect that from this journey. If you want to apply, go to wheeloffortune.com and apply. I've been a lifelong learner my whole life, and I loved solving puzzles when I was a kid. And it was a dream come true that I wanted to make realized. And I just, I really appreciate all the support. Thank you.
So let's see, if we can get this clip working. I know not everybody had the opportunity to watch, but I just wanted to share this one part.
Your wallet.
Yeah, of course, we're going to get an ad. Let's see. That's good.
They have gotten so good at letting me know that they would like to solve the puzzle, Ms. Smith.
Well, so would we, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
So good luck. You've got $30,670 before we spin the wheel. Let's say hi to mom over there. I met her during the break.
Hi, mom.
What's her name?
This is my mom, Cindy, my best friend.
Cindy, I am so proud of you.
I love your relationship. All right, give it a good spin now. The kids could be watching. Good luck. Make it a big number.
All right, now, we're not going to watch the end, all right? So the reason why I wanted to show that, though, your enthusiasm and just watching you, not just your relationship with your mom, but also just how you were talking about your students and how proud you are of basically our school community and your kids. Like, I just wanted to share that with everybody because that wasn't just here at the end. That was also in the beginning, and, you know, it was a big part of the night. And, you know, we're super proud that you're able to represent our district and our school community. And basically, the best thing that I can give you, I'd like to give you, you know, that big prize. I'd love to be able to do that. But I can give you basically a letter of commendation, right? So I think that I just want to share a little bit about this Wheel of Fortune appearance. So, "Dear Ms. Smith, on behalf of the Galway Township Public Schools Board of Education, I'm pleased to extend our congratulations and sincere commendation for your outstanding representation of our district during your performance of the Wheel of Fortune Game Show on November 6th, 2025. Achieving big winner status is an impressive accomplishment in itself. But what truly made the moment extraordinary was the enthusiasm and positivity with which you represented both Smithville Elementary School and our entire district. Your joyful spirit and professionalism shown through on national television, demonstrating the very qualities that make you such a valued educator in our community." So thank you very much on behalf of the district.
Thank you, Courtney.
All right. So we have some other recognitions. And when it comes to GTMS athletics, you know, I know there's a lot going on here and a lot of really great things. And when they reached out and said, hey, by the way, we have some coaches that have basically reached this threshold. It was, you know, like, let's face it, 100 wins is a big deal for middle school athletics. I think that our staff certainly deserve that recognition, and I wanted to be able to celebrate them tonight. So basically, I'm going to go here in order. So first up, Ms. Kiwi Alea, GTMS teacher, cross-country, track and field. Kiwi, will you come on down? Congratulations. Edward Logue is not with us tonight. If you can, just hang down here. We're going to grab a picture. Is not with us here tonight. He has certainly reached this accomplishment, which is huge, but he's retired. I believe he's actually in warmer weather right now in Florida, so lucky him. But also, boys soccer, boys and girls basketball, and track and field. Patricia Palumbo, will you come on down? GTMS school counselor. Field hockey, girls' basketball, and softball. Congratulations. Timothy Scotty, come on down. Retired GTMS teacher, volleyball and baseball. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congrats. And Tim Waldman, GTMS teacher and also our athletic coordinator, boys soccer, girls' basketball, volleyball, and track and field. And I want everybody to grab a quick picture. And then, Mr. Waldman, if you don't mind, I know you have something to share as well, okay? All right.
As he stated, I am the athletic coordinator. I've been very fortunate enough to work with all these gentlemen and ladies. I've coached alongside them as a volleyball coach, and I've gotten to see them interact with their athletes all these years. Not only are they great coaches, but more importantly, they're great people, and they've done a lot in dealing with our athletes over the year. I want to go over a real quick quote that is also present on a plaque that we're going to be hanging in the hallway outside the gymnasium. It's a quote from John Wooden. "A good coach can change a game. A great coach can change a life." All right, here are some of the great coaches who have touched many lives and who have earned 100-plus victories. So congratulations, coaches.
And congratulations again to all of you. As a former student athlete, what I can say is that, you know, the 100 wins is great. As a superintendent, 100 wins is really great, especially when we get to hang banners in the gym. But as a former student athlete, I can tell you those wins only come because students only want to play and will play well and will continue to win for coaches that they love, respect, and admire. So that accomplishment is because of that. And I lived it when I was a student athlete. So moving on, our next recognition. At this time, Mrs. Carmen, if you will please join us down here. So many of you may or may not know, but Mrs. Carmen did not win reelection this year. However, that would mean that this would be her last board meeting. However, she's had a long tenure here and has really provided 15 years of service to the Galway Township Public Schools. So because of that, we felt it was certainly worthy to be able to recognize her for those years of service. I'd like to also have Dr. Alexa Bashara Blough say a few words, and then we're going to share the plaque that we're going to be providing to Mrs. Carmen.
I can take out my phone for this one. So I do want to take a moment to recognize and thank you, Suzette, for your dedicated service to the sport of education and to our community. When I joined the board in 2019, you were one of the very first people to welcome me. But you didn't just say hello. You helped guide me. You showed me the ropes and set the tone for what thoughtful, responsible leadership looks like. You're dedicated beyond belief. While we all put in time for this board, what many people don't see are the countless hours that you put in behind the scenes. Late-night phone calls, weekend phone calls, research preparation, and careful conversations to make sure decisions are informed, responsible, and always in the best interest of our students and taxpayers. You consistently show up, not just at meetings and events, but fully present and engaged in support of this district, this community, and public education. You lead with both your head and your heart, and you never lose sight of the people that we serve. I have personally learned so much from you about leadership, integrity, and the quiet work that strengthens schools and communities. And I know I speak for all of us when I say thank you for your guidance, your support, and your tireless commitment. Your impact on this board and this district will continue well beyond your time here.
So the plaque that the Board of Education has gotten for Mrs. Carmen says, "Your exemplary leadership enriched our students' educational journey and set a lasting standard. We honor your dedicated service as president and member of the Galway Township Public Schools Board of Education, Suzette M. Carmen, 2010 through 2025." Schools Board of Education, Suzette M. Carmen, 2010 through 2025." Thank you very much.
I just want to take a moment to thank everybody. Alexa, that's probably the nicest things anybody's ever said to me, so I really appreciate that. Working with Steve, working with Amy, Dr. Giacunto, working with all of this board, working with previous board members, it's been such an honor. And although I'm sad to go, I'm also happy to go. So, leaving it for the next generation and other people coming on and just really want to wish everybody the best of luck and again, say thank you so, so very much. It's much appreciated. And with that being said, we will move on to the regular agenda, and at this time, I will open up for public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment on agenda items only, please? The Board values and welcomes comments and opinions from residents. This meeting will now be open to public comments, three minutes per person on agenda items only. Public comments on non-agenda items will be available at the end of the meeting. If your questions pertain to litigation, student, or personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting, as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information so that someone can get back to you with a response. As a reminder, this is a public meeting, and all comments should be appropriate for a public setting and made in a respectful manner. If you could state your name and there's a sign-in sheet there as well, if you could sign in, please.
So, my name is Sean Highland. I'm from the New Jersey Family Policy Center. We're in Warren, New Jersey. I was in Trenton all day, just came back here to share with you this evening about your library material policy. On a side note, in Trenton today, they actually passed a bill in the Assembly that if a sixteen-year-old child calls a suicide hope line, the operator will be prohibited from telling the parent that their child is at a high risk of suicide. That's very troubling. Thank you. But, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Is this better? Great. So, my name is Sean Highland. I'm from the New Jersey Family Policy Center. We're in Warren, New Jersey. I just came here tonight from Trenton. We had a whole bunch of parents all day at the State Capitol because of a bill the Assembly passed this afternoon that if your sixteen-year-old child calls a suicide hope line and expresses intent to take his life, that mental health operator will be prohibited from telling the parent that their own child is at a high risk of suicide. That's very troubling. But I'm here tonight about your library material policy. Wanted to encourage you to adopt age-appropriate standards and criteria, and this is why. The Freedom to Read Act requires a multi-step process for how library materials may be challenged, but the actual standards, what's appropriate, are left to the discretion of local school boards. The school board retains final and complete authority to establish its district's book-challenge policy and determine which materials are suitable for the students served by the school library. In the Freedom to Read Act, it does say, and it does reflect this in your policy as well, that restricting access to developmentally inappropriate books for certain students is not censorship, and restricting access to books because the content is inappropriate for certain grade levels served by the school library is not discrimination. Therefore, school boards may restrict access to a book that is age-inappropriate for students because it contains sexually explicit content, profanity, or other things are inappropriate for the age group served by that library. At the same time, books may not be restricted because of the identity of the author, the viewpoint expressed, even if those views are offensive to some people. Legally, that is called viewpoint discrimination. It's prohibited in every state. So, when Governor Murphy, when he signed the bill last year, he said this in his press release. "Boards of Education and governing boards of public libraries are prevented from censoring library material based on a disagreement with a viewpoint, idea, or concept, or solely because an individual finds certain content offensive, unless, unless, they are restricting access to developmentally inappropriate material for certain age groups. For this reason, we strongly recommend school boards adopt age-appropriate standards and criteria to avoid unnecessary conflict." I believe at the last meeting, you were given some recommendation of what that criteria should be, based upon the Family Policy Alliance School Board Academy. Whether you adopt those standards or you edit them for your own use, the key point is that there should be a set of objective written standards that the librarian, the review committee, and the school board can reference when evaluating book challenges. These standards provide a clear framework for determining whether material is suitable for the age group served by the library. They ensure consistency and fairness in decision-making. Most critically, they protect the board from lawsuits or claims of viewpoint discrimination when restricting access to a book. By adopting and applying objective criteria and standards, the board demonstrates that decisions are based on age-appropriateness, not on the identity of an author or the viewpoint expressed. This safeguards both the integrity of the library and the legal standing of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Highland. Is there any other board, or any other comments to come before the board this evening? Again, if you can come to the microphone, state your name, sign in, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, Kathy Hank, Galloway Township. I just want to say that I read this policy. It's very extensive. I think it covers all aspects that we need to consider when we look at our library materials, and there's a really well-defined process for if you have a complaint. I particularly like the individual with a vested interest, which means that a teaching staff member, any parent of a student at the district, or any student can file to have something reviewed. And I think that's important because that's who we really need to hear from, the people that these policies affect. We need to hear from parents, students, and staff. Some people will say the parents are too busy, but I reject that. If a parent is really concerned and has a problem, they will find time, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat, to make themselves heard. When my children were little, there was a problem with equity in this district, so I found a way to start attending school board meetings. Sometimes I brought them with me. Sometimes I hired a babysitter. I eventually became a board member when I had two jobs, three children, and a husband on shift work. So, I think if parents have a problem, they will find a way to come here, and other people do not have to speak for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Hank. Is there any other public comment this evening? On board item, on agenda item? Okay. If you could please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
My name's Kelly Grace, taxpayer here in Galloway. And sometimes grandparents have to speak for the parents because there are situations that they can't be here. All I want to do is remind and repeat something that happened at the last meeting because it wasn't able to be publicly viewed and aired. I just want to reiterate the absolute need to have things as basic as possible for these parents. And what I had brought up was maybe a take-home document. It would be so appreciative that a take-home document. I have no idea what the librarian, you know, how they look at a child, do they have an ID that they're looking at to distinguish, are they allowed to have this certain kind of book? As a concerned grandparent, I would like to know what age and what type of books. It would be wonderful, absolutely wonderful, if you put into play a document going home with the kids. That would be like movies, where it's, you know, PG. You have a little summary of what that book's about. You can't always know what's going on in the home, what child is at what maturity level, what, you know yourselves, if you have your own children, two or three of them, they don't, they don't always mature at the same level. There's emotional maturity that needs to happen, body maturity, cognitive. So, if you could just make that happen, that you send home a document before the kids start school to know what, you know, they're going to be looking at, what books are going to be required to be read, it would be absolutely amazingly wonderful and respectful, and I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? On agenda items? If you could please state your name and sign in and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you have to just get real close to it.
Oh, okay. And congratulations for your fifteen years of service.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
I thought that was pretty cool, the Wheel of Fortune. That was really fun, and I think that's nice that you shared that tonight. Okay, so, my name is Liz Nicoletti. I'm from, I'm on the school board at Ocean City, and my, I'm...
You just have to speak really close to the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Much better, thank you.
I'm not representing Ocean City School Board, I'm sorry. I stand here as a mom, a citizen of the United States, and a very concerned parent. So, I know what you guys are talking about. The policy under discussion is Policy 10-9, Library Materials 25-35. I see that you are moving forward with the approval of Library Material 25-35, and this marks your second vote on the matter. I recall that during the last meeting, there was a reference to age-appropriate materials and restrictions, which was suggested to the policy committee by your member, Ethel Hermano. Many of us attempted to view that meeting, however, there is no video available online, leaving me uncertain about the proceedings since we could not revisit the topic, and I was informed of technical difficulties. I wish to express that unlike Ocean City, Galloway may take a more proactive stance in advocating for their parents, children, and teachers, rather than merely adopting the model policy from the state Freedom to Read Act site. You would be taking greater steps to safeguard the interests of parents, children, and teachers in the Freedom to Read Model Policy, Library Materials 25-35. Librarians and media specialists are already afforded protection. However, we must remain concerned that if someone voices dissent or challenges the school or parent, or a parent could face legal action, as has occurred throughout this state. I sincerely hope that tonight I will hear positive news indicating that this board genuinely cares about the welfare of children and parents and teachers. I would like to conclude with the following. Roxbury, New Jersey, two moms from Roxbury, New Jersey, achieved a legal victory following a court battle that began in '23 after a public school librarian initiated a defamation lawsuit against them for merely expressing their opposition to the librarian's support of controversial books made accessible to students at the local high school. After approximately two and a half years, State Superior Court Judge Jonathan Vramico reached the clear conclusion regarding the lawfare in a ruling dated October 3, which granted summary judgment in favor of Kobo and Ballastrier while dismissing Caverrier's lawsuit, as she was attempting to utilize the legal system to suppress constitutionally-protected speech. And I can't highlight this enough before I end, that these two young moms and teachers had to fundraise to pay for their court costs and had a young family to raise. John Coyle, the attorney representing the defendants in this case, released a statement following the court's victory emphasizing that vexatious litigation aimed at silencing concerned parents ultimately loses the proverbial battle when confronted with the truth. I just want to give some kudos to Ethel and Jenny. I know them personally, and I know they're fighting for rights of parents, and I do as well at Ocean City. And I know there's a battle going on in the schools today, and I just hope that regardless of who you're representing, I'm a mom, and, you know, preserving my rights as a mom and a parent, very important to me.
Thank you, Ms. Nicoletti. Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? If you could come to the microphone, state your name, and please keep your comments to three minutes. There's also a sign-in sheet.
Susan Calgetis, Galloway, and I'm here to honor you.
Aw, thank you.
In my work as a public school teacher, disability advocate, and professor of art education, I've seen firsthand that leadership is not defined by a title, but by the choices that leaders make, especially when those choices are hard, inconvenient, or require standing firm in one's values. Ethical leadership provides stability for students, clarity for families, and trust for educators. It is the quiet foundation that allows real progress to happen. Tonight, I want to thank President Suzette Carmen for embodying that kind of leadership.
Thank you.
President Carmen, your commitment to transparency, consistency, and doing what is right, even when it is not the easiest path, has set a tone for this board and for our district. You model the four Cs that guide effective transformational leadership: clarity, communication, commitment, and consistency. These aren't just ideas in a policy manual. They are actions you demonstrate in how you listen, how you problem-solve, how you treat people, how you bring the focus back to what truly matters: our students. In moments when the community needed reassurance, you communicated thoughtfully and calmly. When difficult issues arose, you responded with professionalism and care. That matters. People may not always remember every decision the board makes, but they do remember how that board made them feel, and your leadership has made people feel respected, supported, and seen. As a parent, educator, and community member, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the example that you have set. You remind us that public service is not about power, it is about responsibility, integrity, and an unwavering belief in the potential of every student in this district, including those with the most complex needs. Thank you for being the model of equity, transparency, and strength for upholding high ethical standards, and for demonstrating every day what it looks like to lead with heart as well as skill. Our district is better because of your work, and so are the families that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If you could just state your name and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, Patrick O'Keefe, Galloway Township. Just very quickly, while I recognize that it's everyone's right to come speak, at the board meetings, including Mr. Highland on behalf of the New Jersey Family Policy Center, I would remind the board, as been brought up previously, of the New Jersey Code of Ethics for school board members, specifically Letter F, which states, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups." Censorship, whether it's books or otherwise, is not beneficial to anyone's education. And so, on behalf of the policy that seems to be contended here tonight, it's, of course, my position that we remain inclusive and accessible for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Is there any other public comment this evening? If you could please state your name, sign in, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Gary Hermano. I'm a citizen of Galloway, New Jersey. I would just like to point out that making sure that literary content that is age-appropriate is not censorship. We don't put Playboy magazines in our schools because they're not age-appropriate. Now, I'm sure you would never do that, but that's the point. We need to make sure that whatever material a student is reading, that it is age-appropriate. And it's really just that simple. Recently, in another school district, my ten-year-old daughter, who has two autistic brothers, not my daughter, my granddaughter, who has two autistic brothers, was given a book to read in which a young autistic boy, who was sad that he was autistic, killed himself. My daughter was summoned to the school as my granddaughter was sobbing uncontrollably. A ten-year-old should have never have been given this book. Plain and simple. End of story. We have a right, as far as I know, as school board, its primary function is to provide citizen control and oversight of the dis- of the district's public education system, and acting as a link between the community and the school administration. That means we just do not take everything the state gives us and pass it through without oversight. If someone wishes to discuss a particular ruling that comes down from the state, it should be looked at and given thought and consideration, with, always with the parents in mind. Some parents may agree with whatever the state provides, others may not. But it is their right to disagree. We have the right, and making sure that materials are age-appropriate is only common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Hermanow, the book that was given to your granddaughter, that was not Galloway Township, correct?
No, I did say that.
I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. That's, that was all I really wanted. I'm sorry?
Uh, my point is that things can happen.
No, I just wanted to clarify that that did not happen in Galloway, so that's...
Yes, I did state that.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Come to the microphone, state your name, uh, and sign in on the sign-in sheet, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Teresa Capito, I am a member of Galloway Township for a long time.
You just might have to get closer or speak louder, we can barely hear you, I'm sorry. You could take that off of the...
Yeah.
Just pull it off. Thank you.
Teresa Capito, I've been a member of Galloway Township for a long time, and I don't really appreciate the fact that my tax dollars are supporting what the state is trying to make the school board accept. Sixty percent of our tax dollars goes to the school. Sixty, more than sixty percent, actually. And we talked about transparency tonight, and I think it's, um, a lot of the parents, probably most of the parents of Galloway Township schoolchildren are unaware of what's going on here. They care about their children, but they are unaware of what you're trying to pass, to put basically pornographic material into the library. That's what it comes down to. And I think there should be some type of forum that is given to the parents, be it Facebook, or whatever, or letters going home, to the parents asking if they would approve of all this. Do the parents really know? Are they aware? This building should be filled tonight with the parents of the children that attend Galloway Township's school systems. And I can't believe that you, as adults, are going to accept this policy, that you're going to pass this policy. Is that true? Are you going to vote on it again tonight and approve it? You are going to, aren't you?
It is on the agenda this evening.
Yeah, I know it is. Are you all going to approve of it, is my question?
I, I just want to say, I think everyone needs to take a hard look at what this policy is, and quite honestly, I'm offended, um, at the interpretation of the policy. We are not approving pornographic materials for the elementary schools. I want to be very clear.
That is it. You have material that is inappropriate. You have material in books that is inappropriate for these young children.
Have you contacted the superintendent about that book that you're referencing?
No, I have not. Do I have to do it to him personally? I'm here for, I want the public, I want the parents to know of what's going on. I'm wondering whether or not there's going to be technical difficulties tonight.
I guess my question to you is, do you have a book in mind that you could tell us this evening? What book has been distributed in Galloway?
No, do you have one?
No, that is why...
That's the point.
That's the point.
We don't.
And if there is one on the shelf, are you going to know about it?
I have children in the district, and yes.
Is there any other public comment this evening? If you can come to the microphone. Sure, mute. I know the feeling. If you could state your name and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
All right, I have a lot of comments. Um, I am a social worker in the area. I've been in social work for sixteen years.
You just have to get real close to it. What is your name? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay, sure. My name's Allison Maxfield, and I'm a social worker, um, in the area of Atlantic County. I've been working for sixteen years. I have worked with youth. Um, I just want to state that I really appreciate the board, and I really trust your judgment.
Thank you.
Okay? And I just want to go over just a few things that I'm hearing, um, that I feel that need some clarification. I do believe that, um, if people have problems with specific things, um, they need to know what those specific things are. I do not believe that you're promoting pornography. I do not believe that. Um, I'd like to say that there are a lot of really great parents in here who really care about the education of their children. However, a lot of parents nowadays are working two and three jobs to make ends meet. And a lot of the kids are exposed to television, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, which could cause potential issues with the children of parents who really care. Nobody wants a child who doesn't, who follows the ideas, uh, the ideas and guidance of rap music and all these different things. I don't really think people would want to not have proper education in a school district about how to be respectful of their bodies and themselves. And I'd like to say that the, you know, the goal of the school district is respect, hard work, kindness, trust, and equity. Equity means that everyone should be respected. And I truly don't believe, in any way, shape, or form, that you are teaching the children to disrespect their bodies, which our culture teaches every day. So I believe that you're doing the right thing. Um, especially because I don't know, um, the person in charge of the board, but also what you just said, um, ma'am, you know, what, what's your name? Me?
Dr. Bashar Blau.
Alexa. Alexa, I really appreciate your comment, because you seem like a mom who really cares, just like the other parents in here really care. I'd also like to speak to, uh, what the one gentleman said about suicidal, um, thoughts and ideation. The truth is, school boards do, um, they do their best as counselors to, uh, create safety plans and work with the children if they're having these kind of issues. But the bottom line is this: counselors by the state of New Jersey must report suicide, serious suicidal ideation and thoughts of suicide to the proper, you know, to the parents. So I've never heard of anything like that. Um, you know, and usually most parents know what's going on. Unfortunately, parents who are working two and three jobs to make ends meet might not know what's going on, and they might not be contacted, and they might not get the messages. Counselors still do the right thing, anyway. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is, what is developmentally-appropriate, um, materials? As far as I'm concerned, um, there's this whole idea that teachers don't do a good job, and they don't know what they're doing, and they shouldn't be trusted. And the truth is, a lot of parents don't have the ability and time to do what's necessary. That's why it's so important to have trusted officials who are doing the right things. Um, so... Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Am I done? Okay.
Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda, please. Superintendent's report.
So at this time, we have our attorney's report from Ms. Halk, Elko.
Good evening, everybody. Since the last time we met, we had the opportunity to review some student matters and personnel matters with the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to student enrollment.
At this time, there's informational items for student enrollment report, out-of-district suspension report, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports. No action is needed at this time.
Curriculum instruction, please.
So we're looking to move Items 7.1 through 7.4 as listed and attached.
Thank you. Can I motion approve Items 7.1 through 7.4, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dase?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
Yes.
Vice President Bashar Blau?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Moving on to finance and facilities, please. Was there a finance meeting this evening?
Uh, yes, we met prior to the board, uh, meeting this evening. Um, as attached, we reviewed, uh, numerous items, including the agenda, the bills list, items on the agenda. And one thing I do want to point out is that we had been waiting on federal guidance for the audit. It did come out around Thanksgiving, and due to the delay in the guidance, the actual audit report is currently being worked on, and we do anticipate that coming, um, before the board in January.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Dr. Bashar Blau? Seeing none, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda, please.
Thank you. Finance and facilities, Items 8.2 through 8.18 are up for your approval.
Can I motion approve Items 8.2 through 8.18, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dase?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
Yes.
Vice President Bashar Blau?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Moving on to personnel, please.
So at this time, we have, uh, retirements under, uh, Section 9.1. Excuse me. So please accept this resolution with regret, the letter of intent to retire from the Galloway Township Public School for the following staff members: Sandra Lewis Galushka, Roland Rogers Classroom Assistant. Years in the district, has been eighteen years. Elizabeth Otero, Roland Rogers School, part-time food service worker, has been in the district for twenty-five years. And Jerry Roche, Smithville Classroom Assistant, has been in the district for fourteen years.
Thank you. Can I motion approve Item 9.1, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call?
Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dase?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
Yes.
Vice President Bashar Blau?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Moving on with the agenda, please.
At this time, we're looking to move Items 9.3 through 9.8 as listed and attached.
Can I have motion approve Items 9.3 through 9.8?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dase?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
Yes.
Vice President Bashar Blau?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. And at this time, we'll pause to introduce new hires?
Uh, yes, I believe we have, uh, one of our new hires. Um, first, after an extensive search, we're the next, um, Assistant Principal of the Arthur Rand Elementary School. I'd like to, for the first time, introduce, uh, a proud and warm welcome to Alexandra Marsini, the new Assistant Principal of Arthur Rand Elementary School. Congratulations.
Welcome, Ms. Marsini.
And Ms. Marsini knows that she has some big shoes to fill, um, from Terry, Terry O'Connor, so, um, welcome.
Welcome to the district. Is that all for new hires this evening?
That is all for new hires, I believe, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to policy. Do we have a Policy Committee report, Mrs. Chester?
Yes, we do. Um, the Policy Committee met on December 4th for approximately three hours to review and discuss the, uh, new policies, as well as one policy being recommended for a second reading, that is, the library policy. Um, there are six new policies that the Policy Committee reviewed and discussed that are being presented to the Board of Education for a first reading. These new policies do not have any new language in them. There's no strikeouts or no, uh, bold language, um, uh, that's being removed. In addition, there is one policy, which is Policy 2535, Library Materials, being recommended for a second and final reading. The committee spent the majority of our Policy Committee meeting discussing this particular policy. And, uh, we, uh, we consider recommendations from the board members, and once again, reviewing the actual statute in an effort to present final recommendations to the board. As sent to the Board of Education within our weekly bulletin update on Friday, the board had the opportunity to review the edits, um, to Policy 2535 that the Policy Committee is recommending. There will be two action items within the Policy section to take action on. Um, one is the first reading, and then the library policy second reading.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mrs. Chester from the board?
I have one question about the policy we're supposed to approve for a second reading tonight. Is it possible to include in that a parent committee for each school to look at the books or go over it with the librarian? Is that legal, or is it...
So in terms of the, uh, I think what you're asking is like to have a parent committee, if I understand your question, to have a parent committee to go through the thousands of books that would be in the library already?
Just the ones that come up as...
As part of the statute and the law, the, the actual recommendation is that the committee would be formed, and, and basically, the committee would be formed in reference to a book that would be in question, not, not proactively taking a look at the thousands of books ahead of time, and so on.
So a book will come...
There's a process within a policy for that to occur.
Essentially, somebody will say that there's a questionable book. The policy will, the Policy Committee, that is made up of different stakeholders, correct?
Correct.
Will review that and make a determination. And that is in the policy that is up for approval this evening.
Okay. There's actually a well-defined, um, list of people who would be included in that committee.
Is there any other questions for Mrs. Chester?
Um, yes. Um, so Belinda, thank you for, uh, the Policy Committee looking at some of the things they suggested, which were age-appropriate restrictions. Um, however, I was disappointed to see that none of that was added to this policy. And yet, I know it by face, by looking at it, it looks like a pretty, you know, um, reasonable policy. However, when you read under the Library Material Recommendations of the Selection Process, the school library staff member in each school building will accept the written request of teacher-staff members for new and revised library material. Each request shall include, and one of the things it includes is an explanation of age-appropriateness of the requested material. So if a staff member has to give age-appropriate, uh, guideline, why don't we have a guideline in this policy for parents, for teachers, for librarians, also? It's my first question.
Yes.
May I respond to that? So we did look at the, uh, the guidelines, which I understand actually were provided through the New Jersey Policy Center. Uh, I took that by, in your, uh, December 2 letter, you referred to the School Board Academy, which I understand is an arm of the Family Policy Center, which, according to my research, is a lobbying group. Uh, they were just in Trenton today lobbying. I kept track of the first version of this bill where they served as lobbyists, and the second, uh, portion of the bill. But that doesn't mean that lobbyists don't come up with good ideas. They don't necessarily come up with ideas that serve a community, but it doesn't mean that they're bad ideas. So we fully reviewed those, and I fully reviewed those. And the first thing I did was I took a look at the 1982 Supreme Court decision, Island Trees Union versus PICA, or PICO, rather, uh, where the Supreme Court determined forty-some years ago that students have a First Amendment right to have access to books in libraries, to see if anything in that policy, or that proposed policy, uh, perhaps was contrary to that. The first problem I had with the proposal that was submitted was that it talked about high school books and materials, and as we all know, we are not a high school district. So we basically excluded that one for relevancy purposes. And with all due respect to Mr. Highland in stating that these policies are objective, my analysis of them, particularly in light of the Supreme Court decision, particularly in light of statutory construction, particularly in light of statutes that govern statutory, uh, construction, I saw, I think, at least three, if not four, uses of the word implied. Now, implied is about as subjective as one can get. It is not an objective standard, it is a subjective standard. And that is the purpose behind this policy, is if a book comes up, there is a process. And that process includes, is the material age-appropriate? We added that phrase. That is not in the policy. We added that in direct response to Ms. Hermanow's questions. Yes, it's a legitimate question. It absolutely is a legitimate question. And the thought is that if the request is made, uh, and it indicates that there's age-appropriateness, should that book ever be challenged, the committee that would be looking at that challenge would know from the get-go where the developmental appropriateness was deemed to be, so that there is a criteria to be applied, so that when we are going to apply a standard, we know where we're going from. We start at base one. This is the reason this book was put into our library. Again, that's not in the statute. Again, that's not in the policy that was given to us. That is our hard work. I spent the weekend, the weekend before this Policy Committee wading through this, wading through other state statutes, wading through other state policies. This is the result of that. We are from the get-go establishing an evidentiary basis... We are, from the get-go, establishing an evidentiary basis upon which we can do a further analysis. The committee that is going to be charged with looking at a challenge cannot be handcuffed by vague, non-objective standards. They have to be able to look at the book aggressively, they have to be able to look at the book based on where it came from, they have to be able to make evidentiary determinations to ensure that its determination is an appropriate one. If a book is going to be taken from our libraries, it will be stated clearly why, so that the person who is objecting to the removal can then take this to the next step. If we choose not to remove a book, likewise, the reasons will clearly be set forth from the day that that book was put into the library, so that the determination made by the school board can be subjected to a scrutiny by the next level of review. That's the reason that's in there. It was a legitimate concern. It's in there in response to that. It's just not in there in a vague fashion. These books are going to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and they're going to be reviewed when an interested party, that is, as defined by the statute, as defined by our regulation, excuse me, our policy, which simply absorbs those definitions. This policy, as we wrote it, as we rewrote it, presents a rigorous, a vigorous, a transparent means of review. And with all due respect to other groups coming in and trying to tell us how to run our school district, the answer is, this is our community. These are our schools. These are our kids. These are our families. We can take care of ourselves, and we are doing that, and we intend to do that. I spend every day, right now in my career, defending families against state intervention. I understand what the state can do, with all due respect, probably better than anybody in this room. I see it every single day. The best way to protect families is not to have some vague standard that can be set aside by a court. The way to protect families is to engage in an aggressive, transparent, thoughtful, deliberative process. This policy is better than what was submitted to us. This policy is better than the procedure set forth in the statute. This policy was written for no one other than our community, and I urge this board to pass this policy today.
Thank you, Mr. Gentile.
Is that, if I could say one thing? I read the original policy, then I also saw the new policy that was, policy committee changed verbiage and added a little bit. And I think their version is 10 times better than the original version, so.
Thank you.
Can I also add something, please? First of all, can I ask Amy, the attorney, is this being recorded, and will this be available after this meeting, or do we still have technical difficulties?
I wouldn't know if you were having technical difficulties.
You wouldn't know if it's being recorded?
Point of order, point of order. We are debating a motion. How is that relevant to the motion?
I just asked a question. Let me ask you a question.
Now, you asked a question, you asked an irrelevant question. We are debating a motion.
I'm sorry, am I in court? Like, I feel like I'm in court.
Well, maybe you feel that way, but unsimply, you voted.
And apparently, Jim.
I'd like to bring the meeting back to the thing of focus.
Let me finish my comment, please. Apparently, Jim, you've taken a lot of time to reevaluate this and redo this, because you're the one that's put all the time into it, which is great. You know, you're an attorney, you know, but let me say this. If you don't want things to be vague, then set standards, number one. Number two, if you want parents to be able to argue that this book is not correct, yes, there's a removal policy. It's pretty ambiguous, but it's worse than that. Do they even know about the removal policy? And they have, this policy makes them go to the principal first to fill out the form, and then, so, some of them may be intimidated by that, or they might not have the time to do that. And the HIB, which is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, you could go right online and easily just hit something and make a complaint. So easy for the HIB, if you're a parent, and you could do it anonymously, and you can go after somebody, and they immediately have to investigate.
Mrs. Hermanow, I think we need to get back to, we need to get back to the motion.
Let me continue. We were getting back, I'm coming around, I'm coming around.
Point of order, not him.
I'm coming around.
Well, please bring it around.
Thank you. So you can easily do that. However, on this policy, you have to go see the principal first, and then he has to submit something, and then it takes like five days, and then the superintendent has to put a committee together, which is, it's pretty, there's a lot to it. So, yeah, there should be guidelines, Mr. Gentile. There should be age-appropriate guidelines for parents to know. And, but thank you for everything you're doing.
If I could just comment just briefly on that.
Briefly.
The difference is that this policy impacts the constitutionally-protected right that our kids have, and that is why there is this policy. Kids have a constitutionally-protected right to books in the library.
And so do parents.
And that, kids have a constitutionally-protected right to ideas and to books. This process is the process that we're choosing to implement, because we are balancing that constitutional right that kids have.
They're kids, they're underage.
That children have against the parent-patria authority of the state. This is a balancing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have some policy items for approval, please.
So at this time, we're looking to move items 10.2 through 10.7. These are first reading, as listed and attached.
Can I motion approve items 10.3 through, 10.2 through 10.7, first reading?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment on those? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dace?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
This is through 10.7, 10.8?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Vice President Besher Blough?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Then we have policy 10.9 up for approval. Can I have a motion, and that is a second reading, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any other comment that has not been made? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dace?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
No.
Vice President Besher Blough?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Moving on to old business, please.
Old business, 11.1, firm HIB determination reports as listed and attached.
Can I motion approve item 11.1, which is the affirmation of the HIB determination reports, please?
So moved. Second.
Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Promenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Dace?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermanow?
Yes.
Vice President Besher Blough?
Yes.
And President Carmen.
Yes. Moving on to informational items, please.
So item 12.1 is our board calendar as attached, and also, there are some special events listed, and I'd certainly encourage the board and public to join us for our remaining winter concerts. We have Roland Rogers, GTMS, Reed's Road, and Smithville still remaining. If you didn't get a chance last week, Arthur Rand packed the house here for their winter concerts, so congratulations to them during that time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the board meeting to public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Highland, if you could just sign in again, and just please keep your comments to three minutes.
Let me just speak first, and I'll sign in. Again, I won't be very long. Just to kind of clarify my comments earlier, I don't want you to think that I'm saying your policy is a bad policy. Much of it is mandated by the state, and you did some great work upfront to make sure that if you order new books, at least someone looked at the book ahead of time, and they thought it was age-appropriate. We're just trying to help school boards understand that if you have certain standards, whether you make them up yourselves, you take the ones that we give you as a template, that to have them in place would just help the committees, and really yourself, right, to decide, if this book is challenged, you have to vote on it, does it meet those standards? Because what we don't want around the state, what we have for the past four or five years, where there's, you know, school boards who have angry parents and other people yelling and screaming about a book, when there's been a book challenge review policy set up in Trenton to help, you know, deal with that situation, and try to get the temperature down in our school board meetings, so we can make real decisions based upon criteria. So that was our, you know, desire in sharing those standards. It wasn't to, you know, tell your community how to run your school board. We're trying to educate school boards to have these standards, to make better decisions. But again, it's up to you how you want to handle that. At the end of the day, you're going to vote on the book, and then people are going to take excerpts from it, and pictures from it, and go in the community, and it's going to be ugly, and we don't want that. We want this thing to be solved. We're tired of all the debate, and the conflict, and the anger. We want people to have a criteria to look at, and to make an intellectual, honest decision on what's appropriate for children. That was why we're here, and that's why we're doing that across the state. Just wanted to clarify that. So thank you so much. I'll sign in right now.
Thank you.